I would like to remind everyone to please be sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston U2. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Meto, Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings, Father. We thank you that we can know you, serve you, and truly just come to love you more each and every day. We thank you for the opportunity here to serve you in this way. Father, I do pray for the mayor, all of the council, the administration, personnel, city. Lord, just help us to know your will and follow it in all circumstances at all times. We thank you that we can know your faithfulness and your sovereignty over all things in front of us. We lay it at your feet and give you praise for all that's done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have an update from our EMA Director, Ms. Gaither.
Good morning. Councilwoman Williams asked a question last week specific to an app. Then Josh has done his homework and we've followed up on it. So he's gonna give that brief. Okay. Study up. He's gonna get his brief answer and comments to that and then I'll give you the next one.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So, the GuideSafe app that was asked about last week, we did a large portion of research on it since the last council meeting. And it's a partnership between the Alabama Department of Public Health and the University of Alabama Systems, specifically UAB, to define a way for data to be collected anonymously and at the same time to let individuals know if they've come into contact with somebody who has reported themselves as being COVID positive. So how the app works is you download it onto your smartphone and then if you get a positive result, it will in turn send that anonymous information to the servers, which in turn allow everybody else using the GPS technology in phones who may have come into contact with you to then provide that information as well. Again, it's a partnership between Public Health and specifically UAB. So it's not something that we as an agency would provide any kind of recommendation for or against. It's just yet another tool that's out there to help in the response aspect of it. Having the right tools in our line of work is a big piece of the puzzle and this is just gonna be another tool that we can add to our toolbox. Any other questions? If not, I'll pass this around to both of them.
What was the name of the app?
Oh, the name of the app is GuideSafe. You can download it off of Google Play as well as the iOS App Store.
Okay. Let's look back to last week. Last Thursday, the drive-through saw and tested 129 people. We want to thank everybody that helped to pull that off. We had Craig Scott with a VoAD and several library members that helped to, library office staff members that helped to do registration and so many people behind the scenes that if I called the list out, I'll leave somebody out. So I don't want to do that. There was plenty of people that deserved our thanks for pulling that off. Edgewarr County remains in the high category right now. The last 14 days, we've totaled 375 new cases. We're still at 37 confirmed deceased. Our three-day average continues to go down, which means we saw a little spike around August the 14th, but since then, we've been in a slight downward trend. Our COVID confirmed hospitalizations for the last 14 days saw an increase, but with the three-day average that I just mentioned, I'm hoping we'll see a decrease in the next few days for the hospitalizations soon. We're now at the average of 8% positive. At one time, we were double that, a little over that as a matter of fact. So 8% positive sounds really good at this point in time. Our demographics are floating around the same average and the same demographics that we've talked about for the last few months. 25 to 49-year-old females are representing those who are the largest group of those who are testing positive right now. The males, 65 to 77, are holding the highest rate of deaths at this time. All that's good news. It doesn't sound like good news, but that's good news and we just want to remind everybody that the actions that they're taking are beginning to show some benefit. So please continue to wear your mask. Please continue to social distance. Nothing has changed except for how we react and respond to everyday life. So let's continue to do what we're doing. Another thing I want to mention is September is National Preparedness Month and with the two hurricanes that we have been eyeing for the last few days, it's a good time to remind everyone to check your emergency preparedness kit for any event, not just a pandemic. We've all been so zomped in on the pandemic that we don't want to forget the other things that we may have to respond to or be prepared for. So keep that in mind as you are out shopping in the next few days. Update your batteries. If you need a new Noah Weather radio, let's get a new Noah Weather radio. If you need help with programming, call us and we can give you the same code over the phone and most likely walk you through it over the phone setting your radio up. So that's all I have today. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Thank you, Ms. Gaither.
Okay, we'll continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held August the 18th.
Show move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of August the 14th through the 20th.
Show move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Right. Proclaimations? Unfinished business? We have none today. We have a resolution authorizing agreement with Barnett Jones and Wilson LLC and this is for structural engineering services to be performed on an as-needed or on-call basis. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Aye.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing acceptance of a temporary easement from Ronnie and Carol Womack and this is for the city to make repairs around a drainage way located at 77 West Tuscaloosa Avenue. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business? Department reports? We have two citizens' requests. We have Mackenzie Clark who talked about community engagement. If you give your name and address, please. And there's a five-minute limit.
Hey, my name is Mackenzie Clark. My address is 105 Cleveland Court, Gaston, Alabama, 35901. Let me go ahead and apologize beforehand. I have a running hill. What I wanted to talk about today, I wanted to first thank Jason Wilson and Devrick Williams for taking the initiative in forming the Human Rights Advisory Subcommittee. What is profound about this Subcommittee is the commitment to reserve three seats out of 12 seats on the Subcommittee for persons 30 and under. Approximately 30% of Gaston's population is citizens who are 30 years and under, meaning this Subcommittee allows a fair representation of this population. This is again profound, especially in terms of representing those of younger populations. With that being said, you as a council and as a city have an opportunity here. We should not squander this opportunity because you have direct access to the perspective of your youth, youth that has been dying for their chance to speak. While this Subcommittee has no legislative power and we understand that it's reserved for our elected officials, there is still power in this Subcommittee and value in the dialogue it will engage in. The world is changing, perspectives are changing. Millennials and younger populations are now becoming the dominant demographic. While the statute is a minuscule issue next to the community's overarching issues, we must take this as a warning. Racism, sexism, income inequality are all pervasive issues and are intertwined in the fabric of our society. It will take bravery and a willingness to engage in these difficult topics at the intersection of race, beliefs, and gender. I hope that this Subcommittee, we can truly have these discussions courageously and also to make sure that we do hear the young people when we have this Subcommittee. We don't want to be a placeholder committee. We would like to actually engage with you all and we want our leaders to truly learn from what is said. There's one thing I want you guys to ask yourselves and really reflect. If presented with another opportunity to have cultural change such as with the statute issue, will Gaston have the courage to take that chance? Thank you very much.
He was here to talk about homeless. Okay, if nothing else, we'll have comments by our city council members. Mayor?
All I'd like to say is everybody knows I've been calling it the Twilight Zone. If you're old enough to remember that, we're still in it. I don't know when and how it's gonna get any better. I think it will, but we just have to hope and see. But I did notice like on the mask and all that, I was in Tuscaloosa last week and every store that I saw, every place I went, everybody, adult, small, kids, they had on a mask. And I know some people think, "Well, I don't have to wear one or you can't make me." And I understand people who feel that way, but it is a really safety thing and we really, really, really need to keep cutting down our numbers. I know the EMA, every couple of days, Fire Chief and all, they have the numbers and they'll go down some and then they shoot way up again. And the mayor in Tuscaloosa closed all the bars because some of the younger generation were having too much fun and not wearing masks and doing what they were supposed to, I guess. But I think if we all work together and try to stay on the same page, we can get through this and then maybe we can start getting back to normal things that we need to be doing. And they did have roads that need paved, they had trash, not trash, but they had limbs and a lot of things like that piled up on the side of the roads where it'd been pushed aside, real similar to the way we look in some places. And that's because they're like us, they don't have all the workers that they need. And anyway, it's just a trying time and we all gotta pull together and try to get through it and everything will be okay. As my football coach used to say, when you got up limping after a play, get back in the huddle, you'll never know it in 100 years. So if we can get through this, we won't know it in 100 years either. So let's pull together and try to be on the same page. Thank you.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, as the mayor was saying, we do need to continue wearing the mask and social distance and wash our hands, sanitize your hands so we could cut this COVID-19 way down so then we can get back to normal. I also want to make an announcement. On September 5th, we'll be doing the census drive, voter registration, and at the Carver Community Center. So there's a lot of groups that's coming together to do this and some groups we go in door-to-door. So if you want to volunteer, you can, one of the groups is CCRC, you can go to ccrgaston.org to volunteer. We'll start at 11 o'clock on September 5th at the Carver Community Center on Tuscaloosa Avenue. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to say that in Alabama City and Wall Street, we've had trick-or-treat for the kids or down there for about 45 years. We're working on a plan this year to see if we can still do that. It will be a drive-through. You'll drive your car through there and there'll be people just with masks on, putting candy in your buckets for the kids. We hadn't finalized all that, but you know, if the weather, if the COVID don't get any worse and we think that's still safe, we're gonna try to do that Thursday before Halloween from 5 to 7, but we're just in the planning stages now, so we'll just have to wait and see. Had a lot of calls about that and we finally made a decision, yes, that's what we're gonna be trying to do. And Mr. Martin was coming today about the homeless situation in Alabama City. I was hoping he would be here that he might could enlighten us or tell us something we can do because I don't think anybody knows what we can do about the homeless situation. We've tried everything I know. We've got the police in Alabama City, we've cut the power off to the gazebo, we've locked the restroom doors, you can't charge your phone no more, Wi-Fi's cut off, and it just seemed like they just keep congregating at the same place all the time. We move them from one place in Alabama City and they'll go down to a community center. We move them from there and they'll go somewhere else in Alabama City. So I was hoping he was here, maybe he could enlighten us on his ideals or something he had. Mayor, do you have any ideas what we can do about them down there?
Well, we're trying to do all we can legally. You know, our hands are tied so much. If I, I'll let Lee speak to that. He's better than I am at it, but if you, you can't do a whole lot with them because I think Lee said it went, am I right, Lee? It went to the Supreme Court and they didn't vote. So go figure that. I mean, you can. So anyway, I don't know.
Can you tell us, Lee, the rights that the homeless have, but for just a minute, maybe?
Well, I'll check.
Do what? I'm sorry.
I'll check.
Okay. I was wanting to pick one on Channel 91 now that can see and know what we was talking about because a lot of them just think we can just go over there and arrest them and do anything we can. I know we can't do that.
I didn't give him permission to speak.
That's all I have.
Councilman Reed?
I think one reason that Lee came in is it gets tangled up in federal law, which when you get into that, you get into a deep doo-doo. So best you just kind of let that go and provide in state law also. I want to remind everybody about the Blackstone Ribbon Cutting. It's gonna be Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. on the mountain next door to Exchange Bank. And the biggest thing I got today, I want to announce that another of our military brothers has passed away, James Cotton. If you look back into history, 93 years old. He was a Tuskegee Airman. He stayed 21 years in the Air Force, 45 years in the Department of Defense National. He was married to 73 years, 10 children, 15 grandchildren, 21 great grandchildren. Today, we just want to salute James Cotton.
Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, just a quick update on the HRC. I appreciate Ms. Clark, your comments. I'm hopeful that it'll be a good thing for the community. I know there's a lot of people out there that have their opinion about it, but we're gonna get together, have some conversations, and see if something good can come out of it. In the meantime, Ms. Gaither and everybody at the EMA, thank y'all for everything you do every day. Please continue to wear your masks. We know it's not a silver bullet, so to speak. It's not gonna eliminate, it's not gonna make infections go to zero, but it may help a little bit. And I actually had a conversation with a couple of young members of community at a local convenience store Thursday night. It was about 8:30, 9 o'clock. They walked in in their early twenties, the only people in the gas station without a mask on. Walked in, bebopped around, weren't observing social distancing at all. Meanwhile, there were eight or 10 other people in that convenience store, a couple of whom were disabled in one way or another, and those are the ones I think about. You know, it's not the young kids that will likely survive this and bounce back from it. It's just that random chance interaction going down the street with somebody who's vulnerable and may not even know it and you may not even know you have COVID-19. So it's just so dangerous and I think it's a reasonable ask for our community to just wear a mask when you can't social distance. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Back?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo Councilman Wilson's mask comments. It's just such a situation that changes, seems like almost daily. These are not comfortable. They fogged my glasses up. I would prefer not to wear one, but I think the, thinking of other people and being in that regard drives me to want to wear a mask. And so I've had a lot of friends recently that have been infected and some have not had any problems. I still have a neighbor that's in week number seven of just, of being just deathly sick. He's gotten pneumonia. So it can range anywhere from you don't know you have it to where you wish you've never had it. So it's just kind of common courtesy and I get that a lot of people don't want to wear a mask and I guess there's not a whole lot we can do about that, but I would encourage people to wear masks and social distance. Want to remind that tomorrow, Wednesday, at First Baptist Church, food giveaway, 2:00 to 2:30. And also the ministry at Church at Will's Creek, they have a very similar giveaway, food giveaway on Wednesday mornings, I believe at 9:30. So there's opportunity for those that are in need to receive some help. And just want to remind everybody to do your best to treat others the way that you would like to be treated. I'm seeing on social media here in the political season of national politics, such anger and it's disturbing to see things rise to that level. Everybody needs to take a deep breath and it's okay to have your opinion and it's also okay if somebody else has another opinion. I've heard this morning numerous opinions that I don't agree with and I'm not mad about it. I just understand that that's the way that it is. So step back and think before you speak sometimes. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Reed?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll echo the sentiments that have been shared this morning by a number of council members. You know, we, it is a responsibility on the part of all of us to continue to be responsible as it relates to COVID and we should continue to take, take measures to make sure that we're both protecting ourselves and protecting those who are the most vulnerable around us. So again, please think beyond you and your personal preferences relative to the wearing of masks and social distancing and all of those things. Don't get caught up in semantics and conspiracies and all those things that come, that have come, that we've seen kind of evolve out of a lot of this. And let's just think from a public safety and a public health perspective. And it's only through that kind of outward thinking and collective effort that we'll be able to get through this effectively. So thanks in advance for everybody that's trying to do the right thing and trying to help us to get through this as a society. I'd like to extend a congratulations to Coach Ali Smith and the Gaston City High School Titans for the win. I know there are a lot of people that have a lot of different opinions about whether or not high school football should have even been played, but the fact remains that those kids got out there and they competed. And there were some great, there were some great storylines as it relates to that. A lot of questions as to whether or not we were being smart about social distancing there, but there were some great storylines. You had, of course, Brady Troop to go back to Edgewarr and win as a Titan. You can't help but be happy for him and that, in that effort. You had Coach Smith who went through a lot last year and he got off to a great start this year. So again, can't help but be happy for those guys. And if you know football, you know Gaston City's got a running back, C.J. Miller. He's a, he's a big kid with sweet feet and if you like football, you can't help but appreciate that. So again, we just, we're excited to see those kids compete safely going forward and be successful at a very high level. Also want to make sure I send out a recognition to Trent Davis, who actually plays with the Edgewarr Blue Devils, but Trent just recently committed to Duke University to play football. That is a life-changing, game-changing opportunity for that young man right here from Attala, Alabama. So we're excited for him. The irony in all of that is his father is one of my dearest friends and his father is a lifelong Duke Blue Devil fan, so this will be an opportunity. His father was actually probably good enough to have played basketball at Duke, but the timing just probably wasn't right. But we're excited for Trent because Trent's gonna go and do some great things there and I see Trent as kind of being my ticket to getting to Cameron Indoor and watching a basketball game at some point. So I'm excited. I'm excited for him and it's a great opportunity for that young man. And you know, we've been, we've been fortunate. We've got a lot of great young men who, and women, who have come through our city and been able to use athletics to get to that next level and get to that next opportunity. The last thing I'll share is I do want to extend a thank you to the many, 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 many people across this community and across the world who have taken on the fight against racism as a moral responsibility. Thank you so much for what you do and as I'll continue to say, society against racism. Thank you.
I'd like to make an announcement. Ms. Kay Moore isn't here, but I believe September, they're gonna try to have a First Friday in September, so that will be coming, coming also. My battle cry, and I got it on a pin, all the energy that we have out here, the only change that's going to be made is that you have to have, you need to go out and vote. You can register, but if you don't go out and vote, you can't change anything. And I'm gonna keep saying, we can do all the talking that we want to, but if we don't physically go and do something, if we don't prepare ourselves to do anything, then change isn't gonna happen. We can talk all we want to, but it's never gonna happen. And the other thing I'd like to say is that C.J. Miller is my nephew that plays for the Titans and I know his grandfather would be very proud, Jess Wright that played for Gaston High. He would be very proud of his grandson, but I'm very, he's a big guy, wears a 15-size shoe and I think he's about 30. shoe, and I think he's about 13 years old, so he's a big guy. But anyway, just like to say continuously to look for the change that comes from within. The only person that can change is you. And when we change, then society changes. I ask for a motion.
Can I say something? Please, please.
Is it nice?
Yeah, it's very nice. About the homeless, the question, he asked a question, it just, we are the lead agency here in Gadsden for the Homeless Coalition, which is a four-county area. So instead of using the police to deal with the homeless, how about us not fund that agency and see if we can get some counselors and stuff over there to help deal with that situation? I think that'll be the better use of our money instead of using the police. And then we got to have a place to be able to house them. So with us being a home lead agency, I know Tuscaloosa, I believe, is the other lead agency for that county, county, for that county region, and they have like seven full-time workers that work at Homeless Coalition, and we don't have that. See, Ms. Baker, she runs our community development division upstairs, but, but she's over the Homeless Coalition, but she has a lot to do. She can't do both. There's just no way she can handle both of those responsibilities by herself. So that's what we should be looking at. And I, I know with COVID and all that, our numbers are down for us, the money and revenue, but we still, we got to do something. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Madam President, for giving me that minute to speak.
And, and the reason, if it seems like that I'm drawing back about the homeless is because our attorney said that legally, we don't really need to really get into that from up here because it causes other problems with the city as far as the legalities are concerned. And I know Ms. Baker, as you said, is our lead agency, but basically the, I'll just say this, the homeless have a lot more rights than we think that they have. And so we just have to be careful when we deal with that and we say with that, so that's the reason. You know, we, we have a lot of, we have a lot of issues out here, and yes, we have a lot of problems out here. We have a lot of people, and one of the things that we need to work on is mental health. That's an issue that's, that's plaguing a lot in a lot of areas. So because we're not experts in, in that legally, because we're not experts in the homeless, I leave that to Ms. Baker. And you know, maybe we can have a conversation later about that, but that's something that we just need to let Ms. Baker handle. I talked to Judge Sledge, and he said that the focus group that I had mentioned, they're, you know, they're working on something, so we'll just let them handle it, and our conversation can be just as limited as it can be. Am I correct, Attorney Lee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, throw you under the bus again.
I'd just like to say, maybe Ben can help me on this one. We had a lady that's been coming to our council meeting for probably five or six months. She passed away last week. She was a member of Bellevue Baptist Church. She came with Miss Lana Waters. Do you remember her name, Ben?
Yes, my name's Sherwin.
Ms. Hill, Sherwin Hill. I'd like to get prayer for her family, please. She was in isolation when she came, she was always cheerful, and I had missed her, then I seen in the paper the other day where she had passed away.
If nothing, if nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.
Shall move.